If I can call the meeting to order? Good evening. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on March 4th, 2021 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood, may we please have a roll call?
Really, Mr. Gillett?
Here.
Mr. Kidd? Okay, got it. Mr. Marini?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulser? Mrs. Stats?
Here.
And Mr. Hia?
Here.
We have a corner.
Thank you. I may all, we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I would like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed below and acknowledge that the board always welcomes and appreciates hearing from the public. And I just wanted to summarize really briefly the topics of concern that were brought to the board's attention. There were emails related to the last board meeting and details of the reopening plan, questions about the survey, comments about the athletics program, comments about elementary school specials, and some issues with respect to, or questions about the, our youngest learners. And so I just wanted to comment that, oh, hi, Dr. Mandelbaum. I just wanted to comment that I've responded to all emails except the email from Ms. Schaefer from February 24th, Mr. Albanese's email of March 4th, and the emails that the board has received today. So if your email was not responded to, if you would please send it again, but I am aware of those outstanding emails. And so I would like to now turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Turghil. Congratulations to eighth grader Julia Sowers, who's participated in National History Day for the past few years, and was notified over the weekend that she won regionals this year. National History Day engages students and teachers in historical research and skills development. More than half a million middle and high school students and over 30,000 teachers participate annually. This year's annual theme is communication in history, the key to understanding. At each competition level, students share their work with their peers, historians, educators, and professionals in related fields as they compete for special awards and the opportunity to advance to the next level of competition. Kudos to Julia for her hard work and perseverance. Hillsborough students participate in the New Jersey Music Education Association's regional ensembles, earning a seat in the ensembles after an audition. Because the auditions could not be held in person this year, the organization created the New Jersey Solo and Ensembles Festival, allowing students to submit a recording and be adjudicated by top music educators throughout the United States. It's exciting to share that Hillsborough High School student Kelly Erwin participated and earned a Gold One rating, the highest rating available. Kelly may now submit a recording to be adjudicated against all other Gold One rating designees in New Jersey as part of their state festival. Congratulations, Kelly. As we navigate the pandemic, social unrest, and economic uncertainty we are facing these days, social emotional learning supports individuals and communities in coping with these challenges through fostering the development of resiliency skills and through promoting mental health and wellness. As such, we are joining the New Jersey Department of Education and other national organizations in celebrating International SCL Day on March 26th, 2021. While SCL has been embedded into our curriculum, in honor of SCL Day, the Curriculum Office will be sharing additional resources for all stakeholders to engage in SCL activities as we support one another during these taxing times. I'm also very excited to share the launch of HTTPS Kids Corner, that is the home of our new Tech Buddies program. This program gives elementary students the opportunity to ask technology questions that are answered by high school students. This is a tremendous way to engage cross-grade and district interaction between our students, a win-win for all. Congratulations to Aravind Krishnan for earning a silver medal at Level 5 of the National Spanish Exam. The NSC measures performance and achievement of students who are studying Spanish as a second language. Aravind, a senior at Hillsborough High School, took the exam in spring 2020 along with the help of his AP Spanish teacher, Mrs. Paula Cornspan. He is one of only 26 students in the state of New Jersey to earn the silver medal at Level 5 and one of 8,261 silver medal winners nationwide. We are extremely proud of Aravind's accomplishments. Spring is just around the corner, longer days, warmer weather, increased availability of COVID-19 vaccinations, and a renewed sense of hope as we continue to move forward with life, getting our children back in school, and remaining positive as we continue to see small improvements overall. However, as we come upon the one-year anniversary of COVID closures, we must remember to remain realistic and vigilant. COVID is still here and will likely be with us for a while longer. However, we have together learned to build resilience and perseverance. We have learned to get by and even thrive in an environment in which we are not accustomed. Words and actions matter. Everyone, and I mean everyone, is managing unprecedented levels of anxiety and stress. We are all doing our best to take care of our families. Remember to take care of yourself so that you're better able to take care of your loved ones. It seems we have a promise of warmer weather this week, so if possible, be sure to try to get outside if you're able to do so. Also, remember to spring ahead this Saturday. This coming weekend starts daylight savings time, so set your clocks ahead one hour on Saturday and enjoy the longer days. Last Monday, we welcomed back about 424 students. Today, we welcome back approximately another 400 students to school as we continue to phase in and phase up our return to school plans. Again, please remain vigilant in all activities and avoid unnecessary travel. If you must travel over the spring break, please follow recommended New Jersey Department of Health guidelines for returning to school, and please reach out to your school nurse if there are any questions. I'd like to share some preliminary results of the parent survey that provided us with some interesting information. As of today, approximately 25% of parents have chosen the all-virtual option and 49% have chosen the in-person option. As of this afternoon, approximately 26% of parents have not completed the survey. We did send out a school messenger reminding everybody to please do so. Of those parents who have not completed the survey, approximately 84% of the 26% are already all virtual students who may have elected not to complete the survey. We look forward to continued survey results and sharing next steps with our parents, students, and staff. Finally, it's a pleasure for me to welcome Dr. Bert Mandelbaum, our district physician, to the meeting tonight. Dr. Mandelbaum will share a brief 10-minute presentation on reopening of schools from the perspective of a pediatrician who's followed the science and data on COVID-19 extremely closely over the last year and answer any questions from the board. Welcome, Dr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you for having me. Can we clarify, attempt to answer any questions? I'll do the best I can. All right, and do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes, you do, doctor.
Let's see. All right, Ms. Antunes, can you see this?
I cannot, but, no, we cannot. It's just a black screen.
My end, it says it's sharing, so I'm gonna exit one more time.
Okay.
How about now, can you see this?
No, we cannot.
Do you want to have a tech person kind of walk through this so I can see it on my end, as it says it's sharing, so I want to make sure I don't waste time for the board and I'm hard to do this, and I can answer questions if we can't get this up, but I'd love to be able to just share some slides, so.
Sure. Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I will. Yeah, who do you want me to send it to? I could just easily share it. It's a, it's a Google slideshow, so I'll, yeah. All right, I will share it now. I'm gonna stop sharing here. And I shared it with you, you can tell me if you have it.
I have it, let me, let me just get it. Okay, let me share my screen. Okay, can we, good job.
I can see it.
Okay, you tell me where you want me to go, doctor.
Yep, I'll just say, all right, next slide. And you're right, it is a year into this right now, so I'm gonna get to the meat of this, so we'll go through really quickly so we don't spend time, unnecessary time when we answer questions. Next slide. Just to kind of reiterate, we're, you know, a year into this, we really are back to where we started in our understanding of the virus as predominantly a droplet-spread virus, predominantly kind of face-to-face. You know, we do not, thankfully, we've recognized, though there is aerosolization, that is really not the main way it's spread, and we also recognize it really is not contact with droplets, though that's possible, that there was a point that we thought that that might be a predominant way because of all the asymptomatic spread, but that does not seem to be the case. Next slide. We've learned a lot about masks and, you know, our, I think, public health messaging about masks changed over time, so we know good masks and bad masks, we know masks shouldn't have isolation valves. Next slide, please. We've learned how to wear the masks and, you know, most recently, you know, the newest information is really about how to use kind of two-layer masks and, you know, and that is for everyone, and two-layer masks, having a surgical mask and then a cloth mask on top of it, really is almost as effective as N95 masks that we talked about kind of early on that were really hard to get. Next slide. This goes into a little bit more of what we've learned about gators, and gators are okay if they're thick, if they're two layers or more, thin gators or not, we still don't really know much about face shields, but we know masks work. Next slide, please. And interestingly, we know that people can wear, kids can wear masks, so there's a lot of consideration about whether kids would wear masks, and I think a year into this, across the world, we've recognized kids really can. Here's the slide, the most recent kind of data about two masks and, you know, that, that double, that double masks really are almost as effective as N95 masks, they really are great at filtering out issues and preventing particles from coming out of your mouth. Next slide. We won't go too much into the vaccine, and I want some of these talks that go into the immunology, I will not today. Next slide, but I will walk you through the numbers. So this is from New Jersey as of today, so 2.5 million doses, remember, there's about 6 million adults in New Jersey, and we have, you know, getting close to a million people who are fully vaccinated, and, you know, we have 1.6 million people who have had at least one dose, so this 2.5 million is not 2.5 million people, it's 2.5 million doses, but we are getting there, and that it really is, you know, 10 weeks of vaccinating, and if you go to the next slide, I'll show you one other slide, you'll see the trajectory, but this is from the CDC as of today, and so if you could look on the left, that's 116 million doses have been delivered and close to 100 million doses given out, same thing, that's total, so there's 30 million people in this country who have already received two doses, and then there's, you know, 60 million people who have gotten one dose, so we really are making a ton of progress. It's not been smooth, it's not been fast enough for us, but in some ways, it's just miraculous to be able to say that we've given out this many doses, and hopefully, as with the J&amp;J vaccine, you know, we're gonna see kind of a increasing trajectory. Next slide. And you can see this is going up to like the end of February, this was the pace, so we were not at a pace, the other day I heard that I think we gave out 3 million doses in a day, that's like 1/100 of the population, and so like if we stay at that rate, we're really gonna be able to, hopefully, in the next couple of months, be able to immunize anyone who is eligible, anyone who wants one, and, you know, we're really happy, we pushed hard to try to get educators' vaccines, and I know it's been slower than anyone wanted, but I'm happy, really happy to be able to know that we're able to get, that they're able to get it on the list. I think the next thing is being able to get them the vaccines or try to help them get the vaccines as soon as possible, and that's, you know, we're hoping the state allows us. Next slide. And we know vaccines work, they, they don't have, nothing is perfect, these vaccines, though, are pretty close to perfect, if what your goal is preventing hospitalizations and deaths, the vaccines are amazing. Next slide. I'll come back to this, because this is gonna become important, but the last time that, so the New Jersey Department of Health with the New Jersey Department of Ed puts out guidelines for health, for how the schools should kind of work looking at health in the schools, especially related to the pandemic, so the last one was on January 19th. Next slide, please. So what do we know as of now? Looking back over the course of this year, we know that, like, never, I don't know, the last time I was on a Board of Ed in Hillsborough talking, would people actually wanted to listen to me talk before this year? So like, we know that we've had to have both the Health Department physicians, scientists, along with the educators and administrators working collaboratively to figure out, as we kind of marched through this, how to do this, trying to, we have as many in-person, make school as safe as possible, but to protect the students, the educators, the community, and we had to learn to trust each other. The, the schools needed to trust the scientific guidelines, and scientists and physicians needed to trust the schools to figure out operationally how to kind of play this out and make it work. Next slide. And for the most part, like, I don't, I wouldn't bet that we would have it right, I thought we had it right, but in retrospect, we really did. What we thought would happen, happened, the mitigation strategies worked, though we've had cases coming in, and, you know, I think you guys, you presented, it's on your website, you guys talk about it, what we have not seen is in-school spread, that was really what we were worried about, and so, you know, looking back, the way, the way we played it out, things had been safe. The question is, how do we continue to move forward and have it play out so we continue for it to be safe? And that these models work, you know, we, not just in one area of the country, and not just within places of low prevalence, but in general, schools have been relatively safe. Next slide. We also learned that we have to educate, so public health, it is hard to give public health messaging without conversations, like these soundbites and politicizing it, like, it makes it really difficult to educate people about, to understand the disease, and as our understanding changes, so the more we do that, the better. We learned that, you know, sports and activities outside can be done safely, the stuff that really makes it higher risk is all the other kind of tangential stuff. It's not the sport, but it's the carpooling, or the hanging out, or the sleepovers, or the parties, all that stuff that kind of had gone hand-in-hand with activities, and, you know, seems like if you could do one, why can't you do the other? And it's, it, having unmasked in-person time in a car, in a house, like, really raises the risk of people spreading disease. Next slide. We also learned, like, I think there, we had a lot of assumptions that this was a respiratory virus, so it will follow other respiratory viruses like the flu, which is predominantly spread by younger kids, so with, you know, lots of runny nose and coughing, and they spread it to adults, and that's not been the way, the youngest, the younger the kids, the less likely they are to spread it. So we learned that, and we assumed, and we, it's really borne out, the higher the prevalence in the community, the higher the amount of times that you're gonna have kids showing up in school with disease, and the better the community does, so will the students and faculty. Next slide. So this is what New Jersey has as of today, you have to always remember, these numbers are clearly underreported, but we have 800,000 cases in New Jersey, whether that's double that we really had, or, you know, but we have, we at least probably have a million cases, but 800,000 cases that we know of. Next slide. And this is how the cases played out, so early on, so on the kind of x-axis going horizontally are the dates, and then the y-axis are the numbers, so you could see, yeah, at least as you're, that's perfect, as you're moving it around, you could see back in the spring, where Lisa's mouse is pointing to, we couldn't do testing, so our numbers at that point were much, much higher, but the only people who could get tested at that point were, you had to be really at the hospital and sick enough that we thought you had COVID. And then there was that kind of precipitous drop, really in hospitalizations, because those are the people getting tested, and we had a great summer, we had a really, you know, we did not have a kind of second phase at that point, and then you could see as we're going into Thanksgiving, right, right around there, yeah, that's Thanksgiving, and then Christmas, New Year's, you know, and our numbers were really high, you know, 6,000 cases, you know, and this is, you know, these are, I think, cases, these are daily cases that you were seeing, so, and you could see the numbers, it's clearly a downward trajectory, and, you know, it was a rapid one, and now it's, it, it's plateauing a little bit, but we, you know, we expect, and I'm gonna show you what the projections are for a second, but this is really great to see. Next slide. Just to put it in perspective, to try to get a better apples-to-apples comparison, this is from New Jersey, and this is looking at the hospitalizations, so, you know, same thing, this is going from the spring, where Lisa's mouse is there, yeah, all the way, and you could see hospitalizations, it drops, and then it went back up, but it never peaked close to where we were back in the spring, so that is great, though our testing, we were just testing so many more people. Next slide. And even better, this is deaths, so no, you know, I don't wanna, one death is one death too many, but if you look in the spring, we were just decimated, it was really, really a trying time in the medical community, and then thankfully, got to a really, really low number, and then even as we peaked in kind of now, the number never went that high, but a bunch of reasons for it, masking really helped, so, you know, we know that people, if you get exposed to a lower viral load, you get less sick, our, some of our medication strategies, our management strategies were helpful, and, and it was hitting a different population. Early on, we, it really went through the nursing homes, a much more vulnerable population. Next slide. So that's where we were, and I, I'm sure where everyone, nobody cares, what we really wanna know is where we're going, and that's harder to guess, so the Institute for Health Metrics out of University of Washington is probably the only one that really does predictions now, so this is update, they update it once or twice a week, this is updated March 6th, and this is for New Jersey. Next slide. And ignore the screenshot I did, if, Lisa, if you could put, if you can see where it says today, that dotted arrow, not that one, that one, yeah, so ignore the one before, that's January, but this is where we are right now, that dotted line, and those lines going down, the green, the purple is what they expect, green is what they think if the one below that is, if everyone was perfect with masking, and the red one is if, you know, things break the wrong way, people just give up and they start traveling, no one follows guidance, people don't wear their masks, that's what they think, but if everyone does the right thing, you could see that dropping down, and we're really getting into May and June into a great spot, you know, whether or not this ever goes away, like, but we're, to be at a much, much lower number, and like, that, that's the predictions if we kind of follow the guidelines and, and keep doing what we're doing. Next slide. So this is per the state's website right now, so the way they ga, we talked about this before, they gauge outbreaks in schools if they, if, it seems to be epidemiologically linked, so you have, you know, two kids sitting next to each other with COVID, one gets it after the other, and there's no other link between them, so it's the public health officers with the nurses who figure this out. So we have about 760 cases, remember, even, you know, and even if this is undercounted, it's not undercounted by much, so we have 800,000 cases in the state that we know of and less than 800 that came from the school, so schools are not the primary drivers with it. Next slide. And that's all this slide is looking at, is again saying, you know, it's like one for every 10,000 cases. Next slide. So what has Hillsborough done? We, you know, we, we, and I'll, I'll show you the CDC's recs in a second, but we basically, right from the beginning, followed all the recommendations that were out there, so mandatory masking, physical distancing, six feet or more, half-day in school, because lunch becomes an issue, because masks off improved ventilation, hand washing, daily family screening, keeping out sick children or faculty until they're cleared, and then, you know, breaking the kids into cohorts just to reduce class sizes. Next slide. A little under a month ago, the CDC put out updated guidelines. Next slide. And this is just some highlights from it, it's all publicly available, but generally, they said schools have been pretty good, and we really should be doing our best to kind of continue to unwind what we're doing safely and get schools open, that they should, you know, in the future, we should prioritize schools, and they should be the last to close and the first to open. They always go through that you have to do it safely, and I'll show you that in a second. Next slide. This, they're just reinforcing that in general, though you can get sick in schools, it's not the primary driver of community spread. Next slide. The mitigation strategies per the CDC, universal, all the things we're doing, masking, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning, contact tracing. Next slide. So here's what they did, just like New Jersey has four categories, they called their categories something differently, so we both have low and moderate, they then do orange is substantial, where New Jersey calls that high, then they call red is high, New Jersey calls that very high, and they have different ways to measure, but they, they're basically using two criteria, the percent positivity, so how many people are positive out of how many people get a PCR test for COVID, and how many new cases per 100,000. Next slide. And on the left, you can see the CDC, and on the right is what they call the Cali Report, the COVID Activity Level Report, and this comes out from the New Jersey Department of Ed every week. The last four weeks, we have been in moderate, so we were in, again, that orange high, some of the counties are still in high, so this map, I didn't update it, this is February, this is the one that was, I think, February 20th, but this just, we as Central West, New Jersey has broken into six regions, Hillsborough is Central West, the last three, if, I can't remember if it's three or four weeks, we've been in moderate, and so we've been, and we've been kind of plateauing, the numbers haven't been dropping too much, but they really haven't risen too much, so hopefully, we will stay in moderate, and the idea will be that we'll be in moderate, hopefully, and slowly continue from moderate down to low. How, that will be dependent upon how quickly we get vaccine out, and how quickly the community continues to kind of follow and do its due diligence, the better we are at that, the faster the numbers will drop. Next slide. And this is just a close-up picture, again, it's from the week ending February 13th, so this would, it comes out on the, usually on the Thursday after a Saturday, and you could see, this is how New Jersey does it. Next slide. So the CDC basically said, if you're in low or moderate, you should try to get K-12 schools open for full in-person instruction and physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible, there's some asterisks there, and the CDC is guidance, the state, the schools are, by law, they're supposed to follow the, the department, the New Jersey Department of Health guidance on this. Next slide. So here's what, where we stand, schools should be the last deciding to close and first to reopen per the CDC, mitigation strategies have been successful, younger kids are less likely than older ones to spread it, and everything the CDC has said to do, Hillsborough has done, which is great. Next slide. So this gets us to, this is gonna be the last one, then we'll open to questions, so the question is, what do you do moving forward? And so I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna read this to you, and I'm gonna just tell you one other thing afterwards. So my impression, after speaking to the state, like, right now where we are, we've really been safe, and we should have as much as possible, as many kids in school, as long as we can maintain six feet, so we need to operationally do it, that's up to you guys as a school. do it. That's up to you guys as a school. We just crossed, I mean, we really have been hovering at that border from substantial to moderate and we're really now, hopefully, the next month, rolling out the vaccines. And per the CDC guidelines, if you look at it officially, we're in what they would call the high risk, they're actually the substantial level, even though New Jersey, we're in the moderate level. So right now, if you could combine cohorts or whatever you could do where it's great as you're phasing up and bringing kids in, but we have to maintain that six feet. New Jersey's guidelines still said that. Remember, that was the January nineteenth guidelines. I spoke with the Department of Health last week and with an email exchange with the the director for the Communicable Disease Program, who is in charge of all of this and said, we're going to need guidance, schools need guidance to say, when can they start to keep all the other mitigation strategies, but allow less than six feet distancing, but maximizing the distance as much as possible. Take six feet, take more, but we can't have full in-person schooling with everybody here in every class if you have to maintain six feet. And they're aware, some states, you know, Massachusetts, their guidelines were to use three feet, but most, New Jersey has said six feet. New Jersey said they're aware that this is an issue and they told me that there are new guidelines that they are, that they can't share with me because they haven't been approved, that they are going through the approval process and that will be coming out, that we will then be able to kind of better use as guidelines. So I don't know, my hope, we had a very frank conversation about what, they they understand that kids can't come back to school if everyone has to maintain six feet. The questions will be what data they use to say, when you can kind of relinquish that. So for me, right now, you could easily do phase one, anyone that you, that you operationally can do, however that works, that you can keep six feet in all the other mitigation strategies, that's great. The next phase for me would be moving to saying, we can allow more kids in, keep masks, maximize the amount of distance, but allow that to be less than six feet. Again, when that should be, I'm hoping that the Department of Health will give guidelines to allow us to do that. That's still, that phase, I still think is a, is likely not lunch. Lunch becomes another issue because with lunch, we need to figure out, because you have to take masks off there. So that becomes the third phase where you say, all right, now how much distance do you need with masks off? Because there's some good data that there is not, it, there's a marginal difference between three and six feet with masks on. With masks off, it's not so clear. And we're going, and so the lower the numbers are, the more vaccinated faculty there is, the more it's nice outside, the closer we can get to, you know, having masks off and trying to use the building for six feet. So we're going to have to figure all this out because we have to get kids back in school. My, I would love for every school to be able to do that this year. I would love to see everyone hit phase three before we get to the summer. So people, we have a chance to try it out. So kids know that we are committed to getting them back in school. And my hope is that the state gives us guidance on how to implement phase two and phase three, because as of now, again, they're still saying, their wording is very vague, but they're, the implication is that we should be maintaining six feet. So that is it. And I'll stop there, Ms. Antunes, and do my best to answer any questions.
Oh, sure. Thank you very much, Dr. Mandelbaum, Dr. Antunes. I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions for the doctor. Ms. Nurse?
Just, um, there's been a lot of debate and we've received a lot of emails about the CDC's use of the word optimal for six feet distancing. You've expanded a little bit and talked about New Jersey specifically. New Jersey is not using optimal six feet, correct? They want definitively six feet. So in addressing any parents or the community members who are questioning why some districts are doing less than six feet, how would you, and I'm a proponent for following what the CDC is saying and all the safest guidelines, but what, how do you answer questions when other districts are choosing not to follow the six feet?
Yeah, it's, it is hard, you know, that so the CDC is guidance, the New Jersey Department of Health is what you're supposed to follow. And they, their wording, I believe, is when feasible. And so there is, it is all up for debate, but the implication, like when I spoke with the Department of Health, the, I spoke to the director of the Communicable Disease Program, the one people making the guidelines, and in the ask of can we move to less than six feet, their answer was, we understand both sides of this. We understand that six feet is important. We're working on guidelines for you. So to me, the implication was, they are not advocating for us to go less than that. I think that, I don't know what the punishment is and I don't know what the right answer is and you, what we want to do is the right thing for students. I want to, I want to have as many students in school as possible, as soon as possible. I want to do it safely. And I, and and there is a point of going too safe. Like, we can't, I don't, this, we have to get them back into school. I think it is a balance and I think it's somewhat of a gut call, but I do not think the implications from the Department of Health are that they're expecting schools to not abide by the six feet rule right now. And I know that's the best answer I could give.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Gillette, please?
Thank, thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum, for your presentation. I'm interested in the weekly Cali report, particularly the percent positivity. I think that's one of the three indicators for whether you go to green or red, orange, yellow, correct? Am I correct?
Yes, you are. Yep.
So what is, what is percent positivity?
Percent positivity is how, the, it's the numerator is how many tests were positive. And then when they're talking about PCR tests, because they don't, the rapid antigen tests, they don't have the denominator. They don't know how many of those are done. So the, for the PCR test, PCR tests are all included. So the PCR test is, the numerator is the positive and the denominator is the total test done.
Okay, so I guess my question is, as the virus progresses over the next couple of months, more people are vaccinated, more people have, I think, I think you said how many hundreds of thousands in New Jersey, a million have had it already, have had the virus?
Yeah, same, right. They, we report eight hundred thousand.
Okay, and maybe it could be one and a half million.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I would think that as we go along, many fewer non-sick or non-positive people will be going to get a test. It's going to be more and more people that actually do have it. So I think your numerator and denominator are going to be very different. I don't see that number ever getting into the green. And which will keep the state and our region from getting into green.
Your, I.
I mean, when you're doing massive testing, in, in, in the spring, you did not do massive testing. Sick people got tested, you even said so. So of course, that, that percent positivity was through the roof. Then when you had, then when you had massive testing of a lot of people, tests were available, widespread, everybody got tested, many, many, we're not, it's in the summer months, many were not, did not, were not positive.
Yep.
And I think as you get to a different situation now, what's going to happen? How, how, how's that indicator ever going to benefit us to get out of the yellow or orange zone?
Yeah, you're totally right. So I don't know, I worry, these two numbers, both of them are so much, are subject to a bunch of variables of human nature. So you're totally, the percent positivity in the spring was forty to fifty percent, because it was only on people, you know, I'm surprised it was that low. I thought I would have, when we were doing it, we thought it, we thought it would be close to a hundred percent. One of, there are, the idea of it is, if the numbers are low and there's an abundance of tests and everyone's going to get tested, that percent positivity should go down. The flip side of that is, as people are getting vaccinated, if they're assuming I can't have it and they're not going, you, your percent positivity might go up. So you're absolutely right. The state, the.
We need you to lobby for a different indicator or to eliminate that one. And as, as we progress over the next few months.
Yeah, for, oh, for sure. And I am, so that is, because that is, that is absolutely, that could steer us wrong. And the same thing in terms of the absolute, like, number of tests. So the, the number of tests, when you're having people who are asymptomatic and getting tested, you know, I don't, what does that mean to me? And so these, you know, the hospitalization rates are really what I care about and or deaths are really what I care about. So the state and the CD, and the state and the CDC's numbers on these were different, too. So the state, the state's version of moderate is much more liberal right now. If we use the CDC's version, we wouldn't be in, because they do it over seven days, the amount of positive tests over seven days, not average on a day. If you do that, we won't, I did the math, we won't hit moderate per the CDC's report until we're less than six hundred cases a day. We're at three thousand right now. We might not hit that till June. Like, that's ridiculous. So we have to, my, this is why I tried to speak to the state. So I am patiently awaiting their guidance. They've been, they were surprisingly on the money with how they mapped it out. Like, it really did map well what happened moving forward. Like, when you look back, when we were in the summer, we were mostly in green, like, we could have tweaked it a little bit, but when we were really low, it was actually matching up with green. And in the fall, we were green into yellow. When it got bad, we were orange. Those numbers made sense based on actually what we were seeing in the community. So my hope is, they'll be smart enough to tweak these numbers and the percentages based on this. I can't guarantee anything, but I, I was at least surprised, I was worried initially. I'm worried about things that you say. I think we have to take all of that with a grain of salt. And I think, I think, I think we have to, where we're allowed to make good decisions, we make it. I think we're on the right path. I really do think we're going to be able to open this, and I think we're going to be able to open this academic year further and further. And I want to see these kids in full day. I think we just need to see these numbers continue to come down and do it carefully. So we don't like cut our nose to spite our face, but I think we're almost there.
Um, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from the board, Ms. Nurse again?
Yes, um, one thing it said about the research, and I've heard different things about the younger, the student, the less likely the spread. Are there age numbers that go where there's a substantial break between like a ten-year-old and a twelve-year-old or how, what's the definition of a younger student?
Yeah, elementary school. They, they don't, so there's not going to be a, a real graduated, like, ten to eleven or, you know, but it really has been, when they've looked at it, they've cohearted it into like the ten and under grade. And so the adolescents really run like adults in terms of their ability to both get it and, and spread it or like, or close to it. If the younger kids and the daycare kids, I would put as different. So if I, I would cohort them into kind of preschool, you know, the under five, five to ten, and ten to eighteen, and the ten to eighteen approximate adults, five to ten or less, and the two to five, the daycare numbers have really been outstanding, like they, and very lit, there's very little you could do in a daycare, like they're not wearing masks, a lot of them. And, and we really haven't seen, the spread in daycares have, have mostly been faculty to faculty, not kids.
Thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum. Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Oliver, please. Thank you.
Dr. Mandelbaum, first of all, thank you so much for taking the time. I'm sure you have a lot more on your plate and to sit here and kind of listen to our questions and concerns that we have. So, you know, it's so confusing, especially for a layperson like myself to try to put this in perspective. And, you know, you read so much information on the internet and you don't know what's believable, what's not believable. I know the King Minchin strategy is, if you're sick, stay home, right? So no exposure, you, you can't, you can't pass it on, right? If you're just, the CDC, the way I interpreted information that I've read is, when available, six feet social distancing is recommended, not mandatory. So what I'm asking is, in your professional opinion, is that a must, six feet social distancing? Is it more imperative to get kids back in the classroom, back in school, if four feet social distancing is what we have to do in certain instances? Is that the key benchmark, six feet social distancing? My, my other question is, and again, in your professional opinion, where do you think we should be with opening of schools? Do you think it's imperative to get the children back in schools from a health perspective, from a social perspective, just to get that interaction back? I mean, I can only imagine how fearful these kids are at this point that, you know, this dreaded virus has taken over our world. And getting that interaction back, one of the saddest things that, you know, I see and I think we miss is those connections, especially with the younger kids, those bonds, those connections you make with teachers as you grow up. You know, they always tease me, you know, I'm sixty plus years old. I can still remember my kindergarten teacher's name in Catholic High School, Miss Sipski. Why I can remember something like that, I'm not sure, but that was my first teacher. So those, those bonds are so critical in their, in their development. So, and I guess it's twofold, the, the social distancing aspect, and, and where in your professional opinion do you see us going with getting schools opened?
So I think Sipski is probably a cool name, so that's probably why. And I don't know that there's anything more important to me. Like, I, I, I am super spread thin these days, but I could not be happier to be here. So you don't have, like, this is not, like, it is important to try to get schools open. I, you know, we are like, I know everyone is working towards that goal, right? And everyone's, there's, there's a bunch of different variables, but I am a strong believer that we have to get it open. We want to do it safely and I don't want to, I don't want to do something that make a recommendation that i- in the interest of getting students back that either causes harm or that shoots us in the foot, that like makes everything implode. So to answer your questions, I think, staying home, there's a couple of things I'll try to unpack. I would put two mitigation strategies as the most important. Staying home when you're sick generally is a great one. Asymptomatic spread has been a, a problem with all of this. And it's really like this, you know, we use the term, it's pre-symptomatic, it's the, the day before, the two days before your mild symptoms and you don't know it. So that's why masks become so important. So in the beginning, we didn't think so, but because like forty percent of the time, we're spreading it that way. Those are the two mitigation strategies. Physical distancing across the board, I don't, there's some decent data, like Europe is using a meter, little over three feet. Some states have used three feet. So there are, and there is not a appreciable distance. So if I had to gauge and put my mitigation strategies in a priority, physical distancing is less important to me than staying home when you're sick or masking. It's still a strategy. And, but I, and I think I wouldn't have kids facing, and it's not in and of itself, the only strategy. So like, in the old rooms where you had like four kids at a table facing each other without a mask on, like, that's a higher risk situation. Having them sit three feet apart, facing the same direction is better than facing each other. Like, so there are a bunch of different strategies and obviously ventilation was in there, but there, it's the distance, I think, we probably will learn that four feet versus five feet, when you have a mask on, doesn't make a difference, or five feet versus six feet. We, I, so if we just said, we're stuck with this right now, I think I would be saying, let's go ahead and plan and start to think through how you could achieve as much distance as possible, use a minimum of three feet, but try to get to six feet. I think because we're just getting to this tenuous point where I think over the next week or two, we're going to get more guidance and that we could roll this out safely in a phased way. I want them back in school. I don't know that it makes a difference, you know, the, the, I, I have two kids in school. Like, so I, I know how much it means to them to get back into school. I am hopeful that in the next, whatever, few weeks, month, if four to six, whatever the phasing is that we do it safely, we're going to be able to bring more students, you know, continue to bring students back in whatever timeline the administration feels like they could do it safely. And I feel like when we get there, it's going to be fine to be able to break that six feet barrier. And, and I do think that you, you still get as much as you can in there. You still do all the other things and you make it five feet versus four feet. I think lunch is going to be that, like, that hurdle after that because of masks, but getting those kids into school five days a week, to me, is imperative. When I would do it, I don't, I, because the, I spoke to the state, because the state's like, we're going to be putting out guidance, to me, it seems, I would wait, and they said it's coming. I would wait to see what they say and I would then operationally phase that in. But we're in March, like, you know, I, to me, I would be shooting for April, getting them back, you know, if, if I'm choosing dates, I would be saying, you know, a month from now, we're getting everybody in with masking, but we're losing distancing. A month after that, we're finding a way, mid-May, at the end of May, to have, you know, mask off and eat lunch and let them have a month of that and really achieve school so they know that we're back. The timing, I would leave up to Dr. Antunes and how that rolls out. The timing, I would leave up to Dr. Antunes and how that rolls out, but that, that's, to me, I, you know, I think we have to do it thoughtfully. Another month happens to give us more time to get more teachers vaccinated, have the numbers drop. Like, everyone's a little worried that we're on this precipice right now. I would love to just see it, like, I, I'm a little worried that this week, we might see a little blip up. Like, I want to just see the numbers dropping a little bit more, and I really think we're going to be there by within the next month. So that would be, if it was up to me to magically create a plan, that's what it would be. There's lots of different variables in it, but I think we've kind of worked towards that phasing with the goal of doing it this year. I would not be looking at a goal of, you know, putting all this off till September.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum. Ms. Nurse?
I'm sorry, I just want to, because I think I've heard a couple of things, um, that made me ask another question, because at first I thought it was, we were saying that we should be following the State Department's guidelines of the six feet. And to wait and see, you know, when you're, we're talking to Mr. Oliver, to wait and see what the guidelines are, however, within the next month, we should be considering to change, but if the State Department does not bring that guidance and still consider six feet the safest way to go about, what is your suggestion for our district?
We talk more, um, so I think.
That's a good answer.
I don't, I, I think, I, I don't think that that's going to happen, um, honestly. So, but I do think, and then I think it depends, because I, I, I agree i- if, if they give really conservative guidance, yet the numbers don't, yet they allow wiggle room, and they, um, and they give it to the local health departments. I do think the data is going to show that it's safe to do it, and, or, or there won't be enough data, but the, the concept seems right, and you can look at, like, I saw Massachusetts data, like, there really was not much difference. So I think if there, if they put some blanket statement that says you can't do it, I think we should talk to, you talk to the attorneys, the administration decides, but you've probably followed their guidelines, but I don't think that that's going to be the case. I do think that they're going to either make it gray and leave it to us, or give you a, an hope more, more hopefully, they're going to give us a clear plan. But my, so my guidance to the board and to administration is I would plan to be able to do it, because I think the numbers are going down, and I think we're going to be able to. So I would hate for them to give us the okay, and we say we were caught unprepared, and the stu-, and don't do our job for the students to get them back in, which is, I believe our administration is planning for that, but I think we're going to be, I think that the stars will be aligned that over the course of the next three months, we're going to be able to progressively phase students back in, and that the Department of Health will give us our blessings on it. And that will be with shorter distance. That's my, and if not, we reconvene.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum. Are there any other questions from the board? Ms. Sacks, please.
Uh, thanks again, Dr. Mandelbaum, for, uh, your very thorough report and answering all our questions. Um, would you say that, um, like, the, there are so many variations in all those districts and, and the schools they're in throughout New Jersey. Would you say that the quality of the ventilation would affect what would be the acceptable distance, social distancing within each school?
I don't think so. And, and this is, um, the kind of facilities, like, that, this is outside of my expertise. Um, the, the data that I've seen, you know, I, so I think ventilation is important. Um, I don't think, I, I think the ventilation seems to have been adequate. What we're seeing, like, when you just look back over the course of the year, like, the ventilation would um, be adding to air sterilization and spread within schools. So what we've seen is not having spread within schools. And I think there are across the country, different buildings, different amounts of people in the buildings, different ventilation systems. So um, I think having a really small area with no ventilation, masks off, like a bar, seems to be a bad place to, or an easy place to spread it. Um, I do think having adequate ventilation is important, and I, you know, I'm assuming, you know, I know early on, the administration talked about all the things that we're doing for ventilation. So to me, I don't suspect that the Department of Health guidelines will have a caveat of based on a certain ventilation, you, you can have some physical distancing. Um, so I think it's important. I, I imagine, though, the ventilation that we've had in the schools have been adequate, just based on the fact that we haven't seen spread with that. I, I know that if we have more kids in there, that might change. Um, hopefully, that will also be mitigated by lower numbers in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Kidd, please.
A question just regarding like what counts as travel. So I'm pretty sure right now, uh, any out-of-state uh, like, activity counts as travel. So another question that I had was regarding, you know, different steps, especially when we get to the point where we're looking at, you know, masks off for lunch, stuff like that. Is there ever a point where uh, if a specific county's numbers are higher, that, you know, that we should be requiring uh, students or parents to be reporting travel to a different county, or do you think that the current standard for out-of-state reporting is, um, is satisfactory?
You know, New Jersey's numbers stink. Like, so where, uh, people should be concerned about coming to our state, like, it's less concerning to go to other states. Like, our states, um, are, we're a pretty dense state. When you look at our numbers, uh, we're, we're up at the top. So travel, like, airplane travel has actually been pretty safe. No, I'm not encouraging anyone to travel right now, but the airplane travel has been generally pre- um, pretty safe. And, um, traveling to another state and not doing something there is not, in my mind, all that much more risky than not having school and having the kids hanging out and having parties together while there's relatively big community spread. Um, the bigger issue with travel right now is just introducing different variants from one part of the country to another part of the country. Um, so I think county to county probably gets too hard. You'll never, uh, you won't be able to track that. There is county to county, I mean, this is why they have, New Jersey broke it into regions, like the six regions, to say, you know, what we shouldn't be doing is, we don't want to look at Hillsborough's numbers on a given time frame and say they're really good or really bad, that we'll make decisions, because there's too much interplay between Hillsborough and Montgomery. Um, but you do kind of say, like, on a big enough geographic area, like, what, you know, Ocean County might, you know, the, whatever the central east region is with Ocean County, they might be in a bad state that they should be doing something different than, you know, central west, like we are. Um, I think we'll see what the travel guidance is, but most, like, at the hospital level, they're, they're recommending no one travel, but no one's asking about travel anymore as a precursor for physicians, you know, um, because it's a lower risk of exposure. So, um, you know, I know, I know spring break is coming up, and that's a concern for everyone. And, you know, to me, the biggest concern about spring break is just that it's time off and numbers are still high. Like, I wish, I wish we could go right through school and, you know, then you have them, you know, you have some regimented schedule that it's less likely they're having sleepovers or carpooling somewhere or doing something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? If not, okay, if not, then, um, thank you very much, Dr. Mandelbaum. I would just actually like to close by thanking you again. And your comments also reinforce the, the, um, your support for Dr. Antunes's Phase In, Phase Up reopening plan as she um, shared with the community on February twenty-sixth, which is that as we start, we are starting to bring back our students in a controlled, um, manner, and then we're starting with the youngest learners um, projected to be in, in the next few weeks. And then as we move forward towards, as you had mentioned in April, um, to our older students. So it sounds like everything is consistent, which is wonderful. So I think this was, this was great.
This is not easy, but yeah, you guys are doing a great job. Like, it's not, it is not perfect, and I'm sure if we look back in time, we wish we would have done something, but in general, like, you guys are nailing it. You're, you know, it's, it's not, these kids are suffering, we need to get them back, but you guys are taking the appropriate precautions and moving forward. And I'm really hopeful that we'll have, you guys will have the Hillsborough students back this year, and they'll remember what it's like, and we'll move towards a new norm.
And thank you very much, Dr. Mandelbaum, for your support and your, um, I guess, comments.
Guidance.
Yeah, guidance, guidance, and also the comments to the administration, Dr. Antunes, Mr. Mahmood, Mr. Callahan, Dr. Feltry, um, just in terms of all the work that they're doing to, um, I guess, coordinate the logistics of bringing back the students. So thank you very much.
Yeah, it's not easy. So, yeah, great job by everyone, and I'm happy to be here and happy to come back. Um, you know, I think the more, the more you talk and ask good questions and think it through, the better the plan will be. So um, you just have to keep having conversations and challenging, and, um, we'll get there.
Thank you very much. Dr. Antunes, do you have, um, additional items for the superintendent's report?
That concludes the superintendent's report, Mrs. Trillo.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum, again. Uh, let me see. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the February twenty-second public meeting. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Mahmood again for these comprehensive minutes, and may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Um, Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Actually, it's, uh, it's an all-in-favor, uh, Mr. Trillo, if you want to do that.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you.
Um, let me see. So I would like to just actually make a few comments before, um, we open it up to public comments. Um, I wanted to note that the Township Committee had graciously invited a board, the, um, the board to have a liaison to the Sustainable Hillsborough Committee. And I would like to appoint Mr. Paul Marini to be the board's liaison to that. Um, I would actually like to actually, Ms. Sacks, if you would, um, update us on the Municipal Alliance.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Trillo. Um, I just want to remind everyone that, uh, the Municipal Alliance and Borough Safe is going to, uh, they are going to um, have a fundraising event, uh, it's a talent show called We're All in This Together, Hillsborough's Hidden Talent. It's going to be a virtual event on Friday, April twenty-third, and Saturday, April twenty-fourth. And right now, we have a call for submissions. So if you have any kind of talent, dancing, singing, bands, comedy, uh, silly human tricks, you know, anything, um, uh, we're inviting you to submit a video of your talent, uh, maximum of five minutes. And, uh, they will be accepted until March twenty-sixth. Um, I believe, uh, an email was sent out with information about that, who to submit it to. Um, it's also been posted on Facebook. Um, and this, like I said, it's, uh, to, it's fundraising event for the Hillsborough Municipal Alliance and also Borough Safe. The Municipal Alliance, um, provides education and, uh, awareness regarding substance abuse, and Borough Safe provides resources regarding mental health and, uh, um, suicide prevention resources. And this event is sponsored by Municipal Alliance, Borough Safe, Hillsborough Stigma Free, HEA Pride, the Township Committee, and the Board of Education. So again, if you're, if you have any kind of talent you'd like to share with the community, uh, submit a video, and that deadline is March twenty-sixth. Thank you, Mrs. Trillo.
Thank you, Ms. Sacks. Um, I'd like now to, um, open it up to the public for comments on the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget. And Mr. Mahmood, were there any comments or, sorry, emails from the, from the public?
Uh, there was only one, Mr. Trillo, that I think that we booked at, but there was nothing other outside of that. And that one, I think, went to a wrong inbox. But that was the only one, Mr. Trillo, that we got.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, um, so are there any comments from the public who are here about the budget or on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Then we move on to the next portion, which is, um, public input on the action agenda. So at this point, I'd like to remind the public that this is the Board of Education's business meeting, which is required by law to be held in public. And I do not mean to offend in any way, but this is not a, um, public, so the public's comment section is not a conversation, and now I'll read the blur. So we very much welcome input from the public. During public board meetings, there will be two twenty, thirty-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comments, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so via Zoom, in person, if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent by a letter or email to this email address. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment on items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. If time remains in this public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw one sixty-seven. Before you state your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public sessions. And so if there are any comments from the public who are in the room, seeing none, then are there any comments from the public in the Zoom room? And I'm seeing none. So I will close. Oh, let me see, there's actually Ms. Smith. Is that right? No, I'm sorry, sorry. I was scrolling and I inadvertently confused myself. Seeing none, then I will close the public input portion of the action agenda, and I will turn it over to the board if there are any comments prior to voting on the action agenda. And seeing none. Oh, sorry, oh, sorry. Peripheral. Um, Ms. Sacks, please.
Um, this, uh, this, uh, was prompted, what I'm going to say is prompted by something that Mr. Oliver said, how important it is of with, to have social interaction. And, um, as we have, we do have students that are in the schools, but they're all, they're all hybrid. So some component of their education is still being done virtually. And I would like to invite more students to, uh, if possible, you know, I'm just encouraging them, if they could have their cameras on, uh, because I think that obviously in-person is the most idealistic way of having social interaction, but with their cameras on, that's a better chance of social interaction than having their cameras off. Plus, I think that would help with their learning better, their, their better chance of being attentive and less distractions. Uh, speaking for myself, I participate in some virtual events, and, uh, sometimes, um, the host chooses to not have my camera on. So at that time, that's when I'm busy doing other things sometimes, which means I'm not as attentive. So if possible, I'm just encouraging people, uh, students, and maybe parents can encourage their children to have their cameras on when possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sacks. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Gillette, please.
Uh, uh, thank you for recognizing me. Um, so, uh, last July, we, um, made a modification to policy fifty-four sixty, our graduation policy, we added item J. Uh, item J, uh, read, I think I have this right. The superintendent will report out to the board on plans for graduation, including date, time, venue, at the Second Board of Education meeting in January. Uh, we add that, but I don't remember, um, getting reported by graduation of the superintendent in January. But, um, leaving that to one side, I've also, in the last few months, advocated to further change in that policy to, um, include, uh, board approval on graduation plans. I was hoping that by this time, halfway through March almost, that our governance committee would have had a meeting uh, to discuss maybe this and some other, uh, lingering issues from the last board. We have not. So I, I sent, this morning at ten-thirty, I sent, um, language that I'd like to see in the policy fifty-four sixty to Mr. Mahmood. Did you get that email, Mr. Mahmood? I think I copied superintendent and the board president on that. And I just wanted, I put a couple of different, maybe, um, sentence and a half different in there. And my, my proposal would be, the superintendent will report out to the board on plans for graduation, including date, time, venue, and manner at the Second Board of Education meeting in January, or at the earliest possible date for board approval. Um, I'm ready to offer that as a motion to change that tonight, if that's legal. Is that legal, Mr. Lapierre?
So if you're trying to, so what you would be doing is if you made a motion, that would effectively be a first reading, right? Because you're proposing to change the policy?
Yes. Yes.
So you could make a motion to have a first reading of the policy with that language. I mean, your normal procedure would be to have that reviewed by the policy committee and have the recommend, or whatever the committee, excuse me, and have the recommendation made. But nothing precludes you from making that kind of a motion. Again, it would only be a first reading.
Correct.
And you have to do a second reading of the next one before it becomes effective.
Well, I was, I, I'm not going to put it out there and be lonely. So I'm gonna, I'll stop talking and someone else can raise their hand. And if I have, if no, if I have no followers on this, then I'll, I won't make a motion at all. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my hand down for a moment.
Mr. Oliver, please.
So I, I to share, also share some concerns about graduation and where we stand. I don't want to have something happen. I mean, I think our seniors are experiencing probably more of a travesty in their world than our seniors did last year, because they've been impacted by junior prom and now senior prom. I haven't really heard much about proms, although, you know, I'm sure during a pandemic, that is the least of our worries. But it's a point in time in their lives that they can't get back. So I'll second Mr. Gillette's motion.
Well, I haven't quite made it yet, but if a third person comes on, then I'll make a motion, then it can fail tonight.
So actually, Mr. Kidd and then Mr. Pulcifer, please.
I was just wondering if we could have, if just, you know, before we vote on this, if we could have it, have the before and after read before we vote on anything, on, on emotion regarding it, so we can really understand the actual difference of like, what's being changed.
I would, I would ask Mr. Mahmood to pull it up if he could, as board secretary. I guess that's his purview, right? Can you find Policy 5460? It's not easy for me to work this and also see the, you know, the whole screen.
Yeah, Mr. Gillette, if you give us a minute, between Ashley and I, we'll see if we can pull it up.
Mr. Pulcifer, please, while we're waiting.
Yes. No, I, I think this is a, certainly a critical issue, and we struggled with this last year because, more than anything else, because of continuously changing guidance from the state and the county as to what we didn't be allowed to do. And certainly, this is an important event. We need to make sure that we give, give the students the best graduation we can. I have no problem with supporting that. I do believe, though, that there is no reason that the board should be in a position of approving or not approving of the plans. To me, this is way too much into running the district as opposed to making sure the district is run well. I'm not even sure what, why we would approve or disapprove of a proposal anyway, at the, at a level that it should be a board decision. This is not our show. This is about the students. It's about the, the high school administration knowing what the students want and doing the best they can for those students. But I, I don't see, based on the actions that the board is supposed to take, I don't think the voting to approve or disapprove of details of a graduation plan is at the level that the board should be operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. And I think that what we do need to be aware of is that I, as this is not embedded or recommended by the superintendent, and as this is the super, this, I believe, Mr. Lapira, if you would correct me if I'm wrong, that the policy is really ought to be recommended to the board for adoption, rather than the other way around. I'm assuming that it's possible for a, but in terms of running the district, it would be the superintendent's recommendation for the board to consider. And that, as Mr. Pulcifer had indicated, it does seem that it crosses a line into running the district.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a good point. I mean, you know, the board members' roles and responsibilities involve policymaking, planning, and approval, right? So the, the overall, the, the overall responsibility would include making decisions about policy. You know, your normal structure is such that your superintendent and your, and your business administrator and HR director typically come to the board members with proposals about policies that need to be changed. And when board members feel that, you know, policy should be changed, I mean, usually that's, the typical process probably goes to, well, I think that we should change it like this. And then, you know, the superintendent and the BA, business administrator can certainly, you know, work on making those changes and then, you know, having it go through the appropriate committee. I mean, that's normally the way it's done. You know, in terms of the, the issue raised about whether or not that's a level of detail that is kind of beyond the board. I mean, it's, it's a good question. It's, it's something that I think, you know, is probably at least a little bit of a gray area. I mean, I certainly can't tell you, as I sit here today, how many boards of education that we represent approve, like, graduation plans. I know a lot of times, they approve the date. If it's not held on the, if it's not held, you know, locally, they might approve a venue or, or a contract with a venue, for example. But I don't know, you know, just going to board meetings and hearing what happens, I, I don't know many boards that do more than that. But in terms of whether or not the board could do that, it's at least debatable. I mean, something that I, I certainly, sitting here today, couldn't tell you that, that's something that either the School Office Commission or anybody else has said yes or no about. I doubt that. So, you know, I think that probably in terms of the concept, I mean, if, I mean, it wouldn't take long, I don't think, for us to check, but I can check to see whether or not that would pose a problem for the board. My gut reaction is it, it, it may not, depending upon how it's worded and what level of detail we're going into. But I would probably want to check that to make sure that we're not steering into an area that goes beyond what the board is able to do.
Right. So to your, to your point earlier, Mr. Lapira, where you said the typical process would be that the superintendent or the business administrator would recommend the policy adjustments, et cetera, and that it would be reviewed in committee prior to coming to the full board, unlike Mr. Gillette's proposal tonight. So, Mr. Gillette, would it be amenable to you if, and I believe the Education Committee is discussing graduation this week on Wednesday, and it's, thank you, Ms. Maroon, would that be amenable to you to have the Education Committee, of which the members are Ms., the chair is Ms. Maroon, members are Ms. Sats and Mr. Marini, to review the policy recommendation or the policy modifications as you suggested? Yes, Mr. Gillette, please.
So I don't understand about this, that the superintendent has some kind of like iron-hand veto power over policies and whether policies can be amended. If the, if our, if our whole board wants to, for instance, you know, that we had that random drug testing policy that was very divisive years ago. If we had nine members on the board now that didn't want that any longer, we couldn't vote that out without the superintendent's recommendation. And to go to committee, we know what the superintendent is going to say. She's not recommending it. So, Mr. Lapira, you're saying that whether the committee recommended it or not, if the superintendent doesn't recommend it, it doesn't, it can't come to the board? I mean, that's what you said. You said it must be a, you must be a superintendent. That's what, that's kind of the question that the board president asked you. That's the answer she wanted to hear. And I think she thinks she heard that.
Well, just let me make sure we're, we're clear. So the, the process that you normally have is that if you want a policy to be developed, right, you have a committee that goes over it, committee of board members that goes over it. And that, the, that idea of what that policy could be, could come from the administration. It could come from board members, so forth and so on. So it's not that there's like a veto power or anything like that. But, but the normal process is to have it come out of a committee structure and, and have the language developed. And then there's a recommendation. And, and, you know, that's normally the way that it's done. But again, I, I think I said in the beginning, nothing precludes a, a board member from saying, I think we should change the policy to reflect this. The question is whether or not that proposal for a first reading is ready to go right now, or if it should be determined by a committee reviewing it and reviewing what the impact is. So, I mean, that's really more of a question about, not legally whether you can, but whether you should do it as a first reading this evening.
Well, I'd be willing to hold off on it if, if, but I, we could have this whole discussion again in two, three weeks, whenever we meet again. We could have the whole thing again. I'm looking at it for the kids in Hillsborough. I don't know. If, if a board of education can approve, look at the host of things we're approving, extra-period coverage, every year we approve the field trip destinations, all kinds of junk. But their own graduation, where we're awarding the diplomas, hands, hands off, no saying it, nothing. You can't, you're done, bored, no saying it. We don't even want, we don't even want a saying. We don't even want it. We want, we don't, it's too, it's too much. Okay. What's the one thing that the board can have some saying? What is the one thing, okay, that has nothing to do, they're out of school, they're done. It's not running to school. They're out of school. I don't, I don't get it. But if you want to have the whole discussion, next, in two weeks, three weeks, whenever we meet again, I'll withdraw.
I saw Mr. Oliver's hand and then, oh, then Mr. Pulcifer and then Ms. Nurse.
I don't want to get off track on this, because I think we all have the same intentions here. We have a policy in place that was implemented last year to avoid a similar conflict or confusion. It's March. We don't have a graduation plan in effect. So I, I think Mr. Gillette's motion is, is valid, and I think we should, we should at least vet it out through the board to see what, what kind of support it's going to get. The concern is, and I think everyone's concern is, what is going to happen with graduation? And if we wait two, three more weeks for another committee meeting and another board meeting, that's just more venues that will continue to get booked up. So you lose the availability to have venues, whether they be inside or outside. We talk about transparis, transparency and communication. There's a whole host of parents that just have no idea what's going on with graduation or prom. So, you know, in an effort to try to be more communicative to the parents, to the students, to let them know what's going on, I, I just think waiting three more weeks is, is too long. I think we need to act on this and we need to come up with some plan. I don't want to run, nor do I think the board should run the graduation. But I think we should at least be aware of what is being done to make sure that we have the best possible graduation ceremony for our students. We, they deserve that. And, and as time goes by, these venues are going to book up. Many other school districts have plans already in place for graduation. They have plans already in place for prom. We're behind the eight ball with, with securing a venue. So, you know, it, it just, it's something we need to act on now. We, we need to inform the community. We need to let them know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Before I actually move on to the other board members, I want to address your comments, Mr. Oliver. Specifically, although I do not have details about the graduation, it is being discussed and is on the agenda for Education Committee. And the thing that I wanted to say to you and also the board members and to the public is, as I've discovered, having to respond to multiple correspondence from the public, which we always welcome, so we like to hear from the public, et cetera, is that even though the public may not know the specific deliberations that are going on behind the scenes, that doesn't mean that they're not happening. So as I said, although I do not have specifics on graduation, I know that Dr. Antunes is working with Ms. Bingert, and the Education Committee will be reviewing those discussions and plans. You know, Ms. Maroon is, is aware of those, I mean, aware that this is on the agenda, and this will happen. So it's kind of like with the reopening plan, where at the last board meeting, Dr. Antunes gave the history and the, the way of thinking about how we're going to reopen that was praised tonight by Dr. Mandelbaum, that the phase in, phase up, that the administration was doing the right thing, getting students back in safely. Those discussions were absolutely happening behind the scenes. And I'm guilty myself, last year as a board member, I wasn't really, you know, privy to those conversations or even, I mean, not that I'm privy to the conversation, but just to kind of see peripherally what Mr. Mahmood, Ms. Dr. Antunes, what the administrators are, that they are talking, although we are maybe not knowing every single detail as it changes. So that's kind of where I wanted to, to, to just express that. So I do, yes, Mr. Oliver.
But I just want to say, I, I understand all that, but we're over a month past the deadline of when we should have been notified of that or informed of it. By, by Policy 50, and, and I don't know if Mr. Mahmood has found it, but by Policy 5460, we are over a month past due. I don't want to wait three more weeks. If, if Mr. Gillette has a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, I, I, I think the, the board needs to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. I think, I think when the policy was adopted last year, there was the hope that we would not be in a pandemic and that things would return to normal, in which case the second board meeting in January would have been a reasonable timeframe in which to be, the graduation venue should be reported out. Unfortunately, things have not improved significantly to the extent that even the governor's guidelines for indoor/outdoor gatherings have not, I mean, I don't even know. I haven't kept, kept track of it. But the point is, it's not a normal year. Ms. Nurse, please.
Sorry, a couple of points. Thank you, Ms. Nurse. First of all, I think to John's points, I, I think we, we absolutely are not on time with the policy as it stands. But that's not, we're talking about changing. We're not talking about evaluating whether or not we're meeting the current policy. We're actually talking about changing the policy to require us to approve it. Our approval or not approval has nothing to do with whether or not we have a plan in place, or it's being worked on, or how well it's being communicated. The change that's being requested is that we approve the plan. Mr. Oliver, you actually said you don't want to run graduation. The change that's being requested to this policy would have us running graduation. We would approve the manner of the graduation. That was the word included, the manner of the graduation. I think you're right. We're behind schedule and we may be in trouble. But none of that is about whether or not we can or should approve the plan. It's about the fact we don't have a plan yet. So I would agree with you. We need that plan and we're losing time. But the requested change wouldn't change the fact that we don't have a plan yet, because the change is about us approving it, not about the communication, which I think we are, you're correct. We're behind on that. But I don't think this policy change would help with that. To, to Mr. Gillette's question about what can we approve or what should we be doing, I think there's a, a, in my mind at least, a reasonable analogy here. We have traditionally had an eighth grade trip to Gettysburg and to Hershey Park. We approve those venues. We do not review the plan that says we will go to Hershey Park on the first day and go to Gettysburg on the second. No, we think you should go to Gettysburg on the first day and Hershey Park on the second. It is our job to approve things like the destinations. It is not our job as a board to approve the manner of the plan for the trip to Gettysburg. And I think that's where we stand with this. It's our job to make sure that if it comes down to having a venue or travel or things like that, that we have to approve those things, because there are contracts in play and things like that that are the purview of the board. The manner of the graduation ceremony, I don't believe is the purview of the board. That's the same as saying, no, you have to go to Gettysburg on day two and Hershey Park on day one, because that's what the board says you should do. And I don't think that is where we should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Ms. Nurse.
I have a lot, a lot that's going on in listening to everybody, because I, I feel like, again, we're stuck in lack of communication. Not so much about what policy needs to drive the 2021 graduation, but how are we working together to make sure it happens for this group of kids? So my understanding is limited in this last year's policy, but I'm assuming it's because of the situation we were in and the fear now that we are so close to graduation without a venue. But I think this speaks to the communication, which I think is getting better. I think it is getting better between stakeholders. I think it is getting better with the community and the email correspondence that goes back out, that Jean has done a beautiful job with. But again, if we can continue to strive for more openness, so maybe we don't need a policy change. Maybe we need to request that at the next board meeting, there is a plan that can be shared. The same thing, and I, you know, I've asked for myself, just as we move forward, we now have had a parent survey. We have had a staff survey. I am hoping that that could be shared. And I even asked for a town hall, or if we had to do an emergency meeting next week, that's non-action, to hear about those results, to hear about possible plans if we have a certain amount of classrooms that exceed maximum limits. So the board and the public have a chance to put our thoughts in. You know, ultimately, a lot of decisions are made by Dr. Antunes. But I think the public and the board deserve a chance to be able to discuss what might be happening and what decisions might be made. Yes, Dr. Antunes is in charge. Dr. Antunes is in charge of the day-to-day runnings, but in the middle of a pandemic, you know, we're talking about reopening of a school or a school district, um, there needs to be input from the stakeholders. I think this is another thing. I don't, like I said, don't think maybe, Mr. Gillette, we need a policy so much as you're asking for a plan. Is, I'm hoping I'm correct in that, and if I'm not, I would love to hear your thoughts because we never really get to talk to one another unless we're out here in the open talking. But, um, if we can just request at the next board meeting as part of the superintendent's message, we would like to hear what the plans are and the possible venues are and what that could look like. Um, but again, I think this is all moving to our need to continue to work on improving our communication amongst one another. Um, and back to Mr. Gillette, I think it is definitely, you should be able to, um, advocate for a policy change if you think that would benefit the community. I, I think that being in this position for two months, I have, you know, I've been in the education field for over 20 years, I've been surprised about the lack of input the Board of Education really has, um, in a lot of things. So I just hope that that was very eye, eye-opening to me in the past two months. So I, again, I'm going to here to push for collaboration, for everybody to work together, and hopefully we can do that and without the need for policies and pressures and deadlines, that we can continue to facilitate open communication so everybody is aware of the possibilities and the possible decisions that are to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Um, I see all the hands. I would just, um, like to pause, um, and not at this moment, but if Dr. Antunes, um, had some thoughts that she'd like to share at, at this moment or at, um, after Mr. Merini speaks. Okay. So, um, Mr. Merini, please. Thank you.
All right. So I, I hear what Mr. Gillette's saying. I understand the, the intent of the request and, um, Ms. Nurse, your comments as well. You know, so we have these policies in place that dictate a response period or timing for events. And maybe this is a question from Mr. Mahmood. Uh, who's tracking board responsibilities and dates and times? And if we have a policy like this and we're not meeting it, um, is there any teeth to these policies that enforce that kind of behavior? Is there a need to report and say, hey, here's why we're not hitting these dates? So I don't understand why we have these policies if we're not actually tracking to them. So there's, needs to be somebody on this board who's a project manager of sorts and managing these dates and giving, hey, we've got two board meetings until we need this plan. We have this, this, this. So we should have, just like we build a calendar for the dates of our meetings and everything else, there should be a separate calendar with expected dates and variables for the content of the board that we are held accountable to.
Thank you, Mr. Merini. Um, Ms. Maroon? Ms. Maroon having trouble hearing you? No. Nope, she's not muted. Maybe check the plug? No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, um, first and foremost, I do want to say that I do agree with Chris, um, about the manner. Um, yes, we have this policy, but I do also want to take note that as per the last education minutes that I gave, we told you guys that we re, we released the calendar and that was because we were waiting to hear about graduation dates. So we are starting maybe to hear, which I don't even know because I don't want to make promises, but I imagine seeing it on the agenda for the Education Committee, that there is some sort of plan brewing because I know we were already awaiting these venues and these venues opening up. So because we've already had this kind of information, I'm assuming that there would be a plan coming. So this whole time sensitive, we guys have to understand that we're in a, we're in a pandemic and the way that things are opening is slower than usual. So I get that this policy has a timeline on it. However, I would like to wait until we hear this in committee to figure out what the options are before we start, you know, going crazy trying to say, we need a plan right now, we need a plan right now because the plan needs to be set. We can't just say, okay, well, this is what we're thinking of because then nobody's, uh, no, everybody's still going to scramble. So I think we need to keep that in mind that through the Education Committee, I plan to report what we talk about and hopefully there will be some sort of a plan. And if you need me to send an email to the entire board outlining beforehand, I will absolutely do that. I will personally call anyone who wants to speak to me after this meeting if there is some sort of a plan.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maroon. Are there, oh, Ms. Stats?
Um, I, I do think, uh, going along with what, uh, Ms. Nurse was saying, I think communication seems to be the biggest issue. That seemed to be what prompted the, the policy change last, last year. Um, you know, it seemed like there was a surprise as to how the initial suggestion for the graduation was going to be conducted. Um, so, and, and I think we try to pursue, um, certainty and perfection before we reveal, uh, what will happen. I, I, I do think it's okay to present possible scenarios, uh, especially because who knows what, what the state is going to mandate or permit or whatever, but we can still anticipate, okay, if, if it has to be held outside, we'll do this. If it could be a combination, you know, we can at least present what are the possible considerations that are occurring and who has been part of that decision-making. Um, and, but it, I do think, uh, it should go through the committee first and then, uh, you know, back to the full board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Mr. Oliver. Oh, sorry, Ms., um, and then Ms. Maroon after.
So again, I just go back.
I understand that I said about the calendar and asked for 2022, but seeing how long we had to denagle and see that is kind of, we're still in that now. So we're, we're still waiting from hearing from the different options that we have is what I was trying to say. I don't want you to think that I, I was referring to the calendar for this year.
Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Mr. Oliver.
So I, I think to my comment before, and, and we've, we've heard everyone say this, we're all in agreement on this. Like, we're, and, and maybe Mr. Gillette's motion isn't the right motion. Um, you know, as Mr. Merini had mentioned, we had that policy in place to avoid this exact situation from happening. It didn't work. So, so to Mr. Pulserfer's point, yes, the policy doesn't work. Um, Ms. Nurse, collaboration. Oh my God. Like, town hall meetings. Um, you, you know, we've talked about this. There's an abundance of emails that come to Dr. Antunes that Dr. Antunes or Ms. Triola have to answer on a weekly basis. I don't know how they keep up with them. But so many of those emails could be solved by periodic town hall meetings. I, I, I'm sure, and, and I apologize for speaking for you, Mr. Goodhue tonight, I'm sure you would be more than happy to be present in a town hall meeting with Dr. Antunes and Mr. Triolo if, if asked. I'm sure our principals would love to be in town hall meetings. We could do them through Zoom, just sit here and let the public call in and ask questions and keep them informed about things. I think that's the biggest issue. And, and that's what we're really talking about tonight. You, you know, Ms. Stats, you make, you make the point. The one thing we learned about the pandemic is nothing can be perfect. You're at 25% capacity, the bar's closed, 35% capacity, 250 people outdoor, 500 people outdoor. It's changing on the fly. It changes daily, weekly. We need to have a plan for graduation that incorporates Plan A, B, C, D, E, and F. It can't be perfect because it's going to change when you think you have it in place. But what my point is, time is critical right now. It is urgent. Venues are being booked up as we speak. They're already booked up. We're going to leave our students with the worst possible venues, with the worst possible dates if we don't start acting. If, if this is on the Education Committee's agenda for tomorrow and we could secure some dates, then, then albeit, let, let's withdraw the motions and, and let's let the, the committees do their work. But it's imperative. It has to get done. We, we can't put it off any longer. We were in a pandemic last year. We're still in a pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Are there, oh, Mr. Pulserfer. Thank you.
Sorry, just, just one more thing. Um, you know, we talked about the, the need to act and, and get this done. Um, anything that requires board action automatically adds time to getting the project done because you have to wait for the next board meeting. So adding to the policy that we have to approve the plan costs you, uh, do the math of, you know, on average, a week plus, you know, averaging that how, from when the plan would be ready to when it would then get to a board meeting for us to approve it. So anything that requires our approval just causes even more delays. Uh, so to me, those delays plus the fact that I think we're dipping too far, uh, I, I don't see any reason that the board should be approving the plan for the graduation. We have to approve the venue as, as part of a contract. Um, and other than that, I really think we should let the adminis, the high school administration put that plan together, vet it through the superintendent and get it done, uh, and keep us out of their way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. Um, I'd like to, um, ask Dr. Antunes if you have any comments or Mr. Mahmood or, or any administrator who might like to just kind of weigh in a little bit on this or not. It's up to you.
We have been working with Ms. Binger for months on graduation. We have started discussing graduation the day after graduation last year. We have a venue. We have more than one venue. We don't know if the venues are going to be available to us. Rutgers canceled graduation at the rack. I doubt they're going to allow Hillsboro to come in. We don't know. So we are continuing the discussions. That's, that's why it's on Education Committee agenda so I could present to the board exactly what Ms. Binger has been doing.
Thank, thank you very much. And that, um, is consistent with what I've seen, that there are, that there are so many, um, things that we do not see behind the scenes. So thank you, Dr. Antunes. Mr. Gillette?
So if it's a good plan, or it's going to be a good plan, then what's the fear of bringing it to the board for approval? What's, what's the fear? There's some fear here, I believe. Um, I don't, I don't get it. We can't, we're not let, just check a box. What, what is the fear? It's in my experience, in my experience, when you put, uh, um, a policy like this in place, it makes a better, it makes the people working on plan give you a better plan because they know it's got to pass muster board. It can't be, uh, I'm going to pull up in front of the high school and jump out of my car and run up and grab my diploma and take a picture and run back. It's going to be something better than that because I saw that up close and it stunk. So I think if it's a great plan, I don't understand the fear, but I'm going to withdraw it. Let's go on to the action agenda. Let's let Education Committee look at it, uh, and just, let's all go home and think about that, I guess. I mean, you know, what, what can I say? I'm withdrawing it. No more for me tonight on this. Done.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Then if there are no further comments, I will turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the next board business agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Triola. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 8.1 to 8.3, motion to approve travel-related expenses as listed, motion to approve the proclamation for Social Emotional Learning Day, and motion to approve submission and acceptance of the Super Fuel Up Innovation Challenge Plan application.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So, Mahmood?
Thank you, Ms. Stats.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Um, are there any comments, discussion on the agenda? I'm seeing that. Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Triola?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows, 9.1 to 9.8, motion to approve retirements and resignations, motion to approve the transfer and change in assignment as listed, motion to approve revised leaves of absences and leaves of absence, motion to approve appointments as listed, motion to approve co-curricular advisors and sixth period coverages as well as extra coverage.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion in a second?
Uh, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Triola. Can we separate out, um, 9.5?
Sure. So may I have a motion for the education agenda for everything except for 9.5? Thank you, Ms. Maroon.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. So are there any comments, comments, um, or discussion from the board on the education, sorry, Human Resources Agenda except for 9.5? Okay. Um, Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Triola?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. May I now have a motion for item 9.5? So can I have a motion first and then we'll have discussion? Thank you, Mr. Pulserfer. In a second. Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Um, so discussion, Mr. Oliver.
So to the point of, of coaches, we've had a lot of, uh, email criticism over the last couple of weeks about our hiring process for coaches, our evaluation process for coaches, and some programs that are not performing to what parents feel to their capabilities. Um, it is on the Human Resources Agenda for tomorrow. We will be discussing this. Um, we, we do have two coaches' appointments that are on this agenda. There was four, two have been removed. And I, I just want to make a point of the fact that there's nothing against these individual coaches and they, they probably are the very best candidates, um, as I've been assured by Dr. Antunes and, and Mr. Callahan. However, I, I just think it would be hypocritical of myself, um, to, to, to make a motion to, to appoint or approve all of these coaches when we know we've had some criticism from the public and we're not listening to what the public is telling us until we vet out this process and understand it a little bit better. Um, we, we did tone this down where we, we are just approving the baseball coach tonight, um, whi, which I understand would have implications on pushing back the season and, and the golf coach, um, which is free. So if it's free, it's for me. I don't necessarily have any issues with that. Um, but, but I do have, uh, an extension I need to make with, uh, one of the instructional assistants. So with that being said, I am in favor of this motion with an, an extension on the instructional assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Gillette, please.
So I, I think, I'm not going to comment on, on coaches or anything else in particular tonight, but I think, um, I think there's a structural issue. And I'm, look, I'm going to repeat, I'm repeating myself, I guess, but I'm going to have to assume that many of these things, just from, um, hearing Mr. Oliver tonight, I'm assuming that many of the things on the Human Resources Committee probably came up within the last 12 days. But Human Resources Committee met 13 days ago, you see? So they all came up since the Human Resources Committee meeting, or, or I would, I would say probably quite a few of them. Mr. Oliver, you can nod along if you, if that's true. Um,
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have to interrupt you, Mr. Gillette, but I, I actually had a discussion this morning with Ms. Triola about this because the way I read this, and again, reading it to the letter, i- it's not the case. But I looked at this and I said, the Human Resources Committee is making a motion for the, these actions, but we have not seen any of these actions at the Human Resources Committee. That not really, is not really the case. This is Dr. Antunes running the district, making these recommendations, which the board is approving. So I understand that the way it is, but to your point, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Gillette, is there's, there's a disparity between the times of the committee meetings and the board meetings.
Well, I, I would just say that, like, I, I think if, if there's any angst, I think it could, it could be relieved by not having the board, not, not having the committee meetings 13, 13 days before the board meeting. I think that's, I think that's, I think that's easier. Look, there's one, there's one lone I think that's easier. Look, there's one lonely item on operations tonight. It's an out-of-district placement. Of course, it didn't come up at the, I don't think it came up at the operations committee meeting 13 days. Because it was in that time period. And I don't care. I know somebody has to have an out-of-district placement. They have to go. So it doesn't matter if they go and we prove it later. I've been doing this for 14 years. That happens all the time. That doesn't matter. But maybe you need to have the committee meeting, though, before you do the after-the-fact thing so that, you know, other board members are publicly asked questions and committee chairs aren't left like flat-footed here, never having had a committee. So I'm not going to make an issue of a disreplacement. It's just a normal thing. But on these things, like certain appointments and things, it would be better. I mean, we just had an hour-long discussion about things going through committee, right? So let's not be hypocrites. If they should go through committees, they should go through committees. So I'm with Mr. Oliver on that. Yeah, I don't have to say anything particular about it until we hear it from committee. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members? If not, then I would like to actually address Mr. Gillette and Mr. Oliver's comments. So with respect to the meeting date of committees, with respect to board meetings, I did speak with Dr. Antunes about that, and we will be discussing that, as I have discussed with you previously. I reported out to you, Mr. Gillette, that after this academic year is finished, we will then review that structure that you proposed with committee meetings coming before the first board meeting of the year. So that is something that I've not forgotten about and that we will review. To the second point, Mr. Oliver's comments about the human resource, and I assume that it also applies to education and operations, is that the wording is, "The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the blank agenda as follows." And I think where the confusion comes is that our committee meetings, our committee names have the exact same name as this agenda. Whereas in fact, in Human Resources, I don't think we actually talk about, as it should be, we don't talk about specific personnel issues. We talk about the general. Do we need, like, how many positions we need for instructional aids, how many technology positions? We don't talk about people specifically. We talk about positions. So I think that's where perhaps, Mr. Oliver, there is that the public may think that this is something that the committee spoke about in detail, when in fact, we didn't talk about any of these people, because we don't. I mean, we don't talk about individuals. So if that, Dr. Antunes, if I've captured that?
That's correct, Ms. Trahia. And also, it's no matter when we have the meetings, there's always going to be lag time. We make a million decisions every day, every minute of every day we're making decisions. And those that need to come to the board, come to the board. Otherwise, that's why we're hired, right? So we may, so no matter when we have the meeting, there's always going to be some sort of delay somewhere.
Thank you very much, Dr. Antunes. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, then Mr. Mahmud, if we could have a roll call for item 9.5?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
I still have to abstain on the instructional assistance, but I'm okay on everything else with the abstention on instructional assistance.
Thank you. Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trahia?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Motion passed.
Sorry about that.
Is that a formal vote, Ms. President?
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda 10.1 as follows.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. If we could have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay, so, Mr. Mahmud, you've got your pick.
I'm going to do. Yeah, I'm going to, so Mr. Gillette moved it, and we'll have Mr. Kidd with seconded.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmud. Are there any comments on item 10.1? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmud, if we could have a roll call, please?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini? Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to open it back up to the board for any comments. Mr. Marini and then Ms. Nurse.
Yeah, there's just one question I mentioned earlier. I was hoping to get a response on who's tracking dates and responsibilities for timelines with the board, and if we have a central pository for that, or if we have a calendar of some sort.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. I would say that perhaps during committee this week that we could address that, so as not to put, I mean, I'm not sure that we can answer that question right now, so if we could refer that to committee. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Ms. Nurse, please.
I wanted to get our motions going, so I didn't make comment, but to Mr. Gillette's point, I understand lag time, because we have two meetings a month and really only one committee meeting for each committee a month. However, we are picking the worst possible times to do it, because we are 13 days out when we start our committee meetings tomorrow. So although there can be lag time, we can shorten that lag time if we just move committee meetings out a week. So I think that if it's best for this board and the public to do that, we should probably talk within our committees to see if that can be done. It might not be able to happen in every committee because of other responsibilities that we're all taking on, but it's worth the conversation in each of the committees to see if we can push them so they are more aligned to what we are approving. Would make sense to me.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, then I would like to open it up to the public. Oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Kidd. Mr. Kidd.
Oh, I just, all right, I just had a comment regarding, you know, back to the graduation thing. I just was going to say that it might be a good idea to have the Education Committee look at a motion regarding graduation. I believe it is an overstep of board authority to be approving a full plan and not just the venue. But I still think it would be a good idea to have a motion to have, like, an update every board meeting regarding the current status of planning for the graduation. So just to make sure that transparency is there. It's not the problem of the board needs to manage a plan. It's the matter of the public and everybody need to know that that plan is happening and that it's being done properly. And I think that should accomplish that.
Thank you for your suggestion, Mr. Kidd, and Ms. Maroon will definitely bring that up in education, I'm sure of it. Thank you. And Mr. Oliver, was that a hand?
So now that it is official, I'm happy to have my cousin's daughter as an instructional assistant here at the school. I live right around the corner from me, and she's going to be a great addition and a passion for teaching. So just some comments about what's transpired over the last couple of weeks. So I am very thankful and very hopeful that we have a plan in place now for the start of getting our children back in school on a full-time basis. The union administration, the restart committee has worked very hard putting together a plan. It's not a perfect plan, but it is a plan. In a perfect world, I would like to see our kids back in school tomorrow, but we know that can't be done safely. I think we need to not rest on our laurels that we're communicating, that we're working on a plan. We need to continue to really press forward and continue to meet on a regular basis. I'm not sure if the restart committee didn't meet in the last week. Maybe they're waiting for survey information, but I think we need to continue that restart committee to continue to meet, keep that open dialogue, keep that discussion going on, and continue that until we see our children back in school five days a week and sitting at the lunch table and enjoying lunch. So kudos. I want to thank everyone being a part of that. I know they work very, very hard for it. But I'm just asking, let's not high-five everyone. Let's not sit back on the accomplishments, because the ultimate accomplishment is when those kids are back in school five days a week, full-time. So let's keep our eye on the prize and keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, and thank you again for your support for the reopening plan and your encouragement. So are there any other comments from the board? Oh, Ms. Nurse.
Just in terms of the reopening plan, again, I just want to reiterate my suggestion, my request, that now that all of the parent surveys are coming back in, I know they have two more days, and I'm not sure where the HGA is with the staffing survey, but that we have some type of meeting, whether it's town hall, another emergency board meeting, so the public and the board can hear what the possibilities are as we move forward. And they can have, I think it will help with the email and some of the frustration that the public has felt if they know what the possibilities are for maximized classes and any other logistics that need to be figured out, so they can at least voice their thoughts and concerns before a final decision is made.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. I would actually like to, to Ms. Stats, with Communications Committee this week, if you could perhaps include that on your agenda.
You've read my mind, Ms. Trahia. We will be discussing that on the communication, at the communications meeting on Wednesday, among others items as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stats. Seeing no other, oh, Mr. Gillette.
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Oliver said. I'm glad there's a plan. Thank you, Mr. Oliver, for what you've done to encourage it, especially at the last board meeting. It's almost St. Patrick's Day. Wouldn't have to want to come here and say, "St. Patrick's Day, we haven't had a plan." So, you know, so at least we got it before one of the holidays, and I appreciate that. So I do think, I think the plan is ambitious, maybe a little more ambitious than I would have liked to see. I think, you know, we can get the surveys back. A lot of those students that are all virtual now, they might want to come to school. There's going to be problems, some issues that need to be worked out, six-foot distancing while those kids want to come. But I'm glad that something's moving in the right direction, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Gillette, for your support of the reopening plan. So seeing no other board comment, then I'd like to open it up to the public and to the participants in the room with us today. Ms. Salinger, please. Let me see. Ooh, look at this. Promote to panelists. And it'll take a moment. Not quite. We can, your video was on for a short moment. There you are. We can see you.
How about now?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you. Amy Salinger, sixth grade Math teacher at Otten Road and Hillsborough Education Association Treasurer. I just wanted to comment on the presentation given by Dr. Mandelbaum today. I was a little disappointed that the public didn't get to ask questions, so I'd just like to share what I would have asked him, just so that you at least have that information. It's in regards to the spot positivity rate and the denominator and that sort of thing. So what I had wanted to ask him, because as he was talking, I went to see if I could find the stats on New Jersey, like how many tests are given, because that's the denominator that we were talking about. And on covidtracking.com, I was able to see that in August, August 30th, we were, we gave about 28,000 tests. And around then, I think the spot positivity was around 2%. October, ooh, is it still there?
You have a little thing. Oh, there you are.
One test. On November 30th, we were at about 140,000.
Ms. Salinger, you're cutting in and out.
There is a message, but it has disappeared. My internet connection is unstable.
It's working now.
It's good now? Okay, yes. All right. January 15th, there were about 142,000 tests. February 23rd, about 111,000. And March 5th, about 94,000. So to me, those numbers are pretty consistent. I do know there are places of work, like in some healthcare facilities, long-term care facilities, they're testing their employees regularly. I know some college sports programs are testing regularly, even college campuses. People waiting to get medical procedures or surgeries, they need to get tested. Anybody who's deemed a contact with the new CDC guidelines, if you get tested and you test negative, then you can get out of quarantine easier. So I just wanted to, I was going to ask Dr. Mandelbaum about that, because to me, the denominator, just from the quick check that I did, seems pretty steady, if not even more now than we were in the fall. So I just wanted to make that comment. And also, as part of the plan, I know for me, the six feet is very, very important, as it is for many of my colleagues, as we are starting to welcome more students back into our buildings, which has been nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinger. Are there any other comments from the participants in the room? Seeing none, then I will go, oh, Mr. Goodhue. Yes, here we go. Mr. Goodhue.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Goodhue.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I just want to offer some context to some of the comments that I heard tonight. When I'm not working as the Hillsborough Education Association President, I serve proudly as the Vice President of Somerset County. So I'm able to see kind of a whole scope of things that are taking place. Through the conversations with Dr. Antunes, which are happening weekly between the officers and myself, and the frequent conversations with administrators that have now become commonplace over the past couple of weeks, we've been able to use that information and guidance to make sure that we don't fall into some of the pitfalls that other districts, for the right reasons, have fallen into themselves, or that we've been able to learn from some of the districts that we've seen in New Jersey, and make sure that we're constructing a plan that is not only scientifically sound, it's educationally sound, because it's going to provide consistency and stability for our students. We are absolutely heading on the right track, and we're doing so collaboratively. I do take issue when the perception is perhaps given that that is not what's taking place. If my name is showing up on a district email that went out, then obviously, we're having conversations, and we're working together to try and figure out what's in the best interest of these kids, but also what's in the best interest of our staff. And to your point, Ms. Nurse, the HGA has conducted a survey. We did that not in place of the administration. We did that so that our members would feel comfortable to give honest feedback. We took that feedback. We shared it in multiple meetings and discussions. We're continuing to do that. We have a good sample. And I can say that while staff may have concerns, and Ms. Salinger just raised one of them, and there's a few others that are obvious, like access to vaccines, access to testing, you know, increased ventilation, because the CDC does still note that ventilation is important. So obviously, our members still are looking at that as important. But those are things that are factoring into these conversations. And it's meaningful data that our members are providing that's being received as we move forward with this. So I do have to pause for a second and I guess clarify that this is what's taking place. It is very genuine. And we are doing what is in the best interest of the kids while factoring in the safety of our members, which is absolutely what every district should be doing right now. And any assertion to the otherwise is just problematic for me, because that is not what's taking place. So I hope that as more information is shared, we can kind of come together and seeing that that's where we're at. But we're trying to shoot two targets with one arrow right now, and that's difficult. But I think we're finding a way to do that in the best way possible. And I think we need the board to come with us, and it's great, because it sounds like the board is. But we also need to understand that this process takes time and that it is an ever-moving two targets that we're trying to shoot with that one arrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Goodhue. Are there any other comments from the participants in the room or for the participants on the Zoom call? Seeing none, then I will close public comments and then turn it back to the board for any final comments, if there are any. Oh, seeing none. Okay. Seeing none. Okay. Mr. Marini? Can't tell. Okay, I couldn't tell. Okay, great. So thank you very much. I think this was a very robust conversation tonight. I appreciate the comments from the public.
One way to put it.
I believe Mr. Mahmud has used actually that word in the last minutes, robust, so I thought that was quite a good word. I would like to thank the participants in the room, the public, for their kind comments to the collaboration. And I also wanted to compliment Dr. Antunes, Mr. Mahmud, again, for this wonderful, I guess, just, just things are moving. I guess, just, just things are moving along. And so, I was just so happy that things are, are moving well and that to recognize also the, um, hard work and dedication and the countless hours that I get to see, because with our conversations, that just, there's, it's just really, they're all hard at work. And they're, and also to recognize that they're doing their, the daily job of running the district and bringing back students. I mean, it's like, and what else? And, I mean, there's like countless other things that with this pandemic has brought on. And also to recognize Ms. Dr. Mandelbaum's compliments of the district's reopening plan, the phase-in, phase-up, and that was just really wonderful to hear. And again, to, um, thank you very much to my fellow board members. If there's no other comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Pulser.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.